Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Weiss. Mrs. Headley.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppe.
Here.
Mrs. Janisak.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Scouso.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Modjek.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have a presentation from Ms. Sarah, please. RC.
Good evening, everybody. Get going here. Alright, so... Bad news is, we have cold weather and lots of snow. Good news is, our ironworkers are exactly that, they're ironmen. They, they do not stop, so... We're trying to stay out of their way as much as we can. Um, so just, uh, some pretty cool progress pictures here. The elevator tires and stair tires are all complete and up. We're gonna be, uh, putting some temporary stairs in there so we can start accessing these floors safely. There's, uh, Area E. Um, the crawl space, the ground floor steel, floor steel is set, the decking is not. We have some, uh, mechanicals that gotta go in that crawl space. And, you know, there's only maybe three feet below them beams and the, and the floor, so... To help facilitate getting all the ten-foot sticks of pipe and stuff like that, we, we kept the floor off. Now, they're, they're done with that, they're gonna start decking that here soon, but they are decking the first floor. Area F was, was our laydown area for Area E, but we have since, uh, begun in that area as well. Inside the ground floor eight and Areas A, C, and D, um, the slab on grade is probably sixty, seventy percent poured. There's just one section left before in there. Uh, some interior non-load-bearing, uh, block walls are going in now where we can. You can see a couple of these pictures, we've, we, um, had begun tending it in to throw some heat inside there to keep, to keep going and to keep pouring concrete. There, there's, uh, more of the tenting there, not only heating the bottom, but heating the, the slab on deck as well, so we could, uh, pour the slab on deck, 'cause that is integral to, um, bracing that concrete wall. Which we can't really backfill that wall until we brace it with a concrete slab and steel and everything's tied in, into there up to the first floor. So that's, that's kinda what we're racing to do. Again, it's shots of, uh, crawl space in, in Area E and, and the steel progress, progress in there. First floor Area A is completely detailed and decked. Um, we've been trying here for like the last four or five days to try to get that poured, but with the temperatures and the snow, it's challenging, so...
RC, would you share with us that is your small gymnasium at the bottom?
Yeah, this, this Area A ground floor, this is the auxiliary gym in this corner here.
And above that will be your administrative offices?
Yeah. There, there's kinda what we're doing with now, so you can see why, uh, we're struggling to get that poured, but, um, as soon as we get some heat thrown in there, we should be alright. Uh, another big thing here, we, uh, are running the, uh, main power conduit. Um, we're not close to getting our main power feed yet, but we will also utilize those conduits for our temporary power feed, so that's why we're racing to get, get that in and get that down.
RC, is that emulsion sprayed?
Yeah, that black, that's not the P-word.
It's not the P-word.
It's not the P-word. That is abating the P-word. So we, we, if we trench through it and we are, um, we run into it, we, we have to seal the, the, uh, the trench with that, uh, emulsion. Yeah, it's in, it's in, it's in stone, yeah, it's back to the stone. Just in areas where we cross under pavement and concrete plates, but that's structural building. Upcoming work, like I said, we're, we're trying to get slabs on deck poured, continuing setting steel with it, with those animals. Beginning to set the CMU on storm shelter, which is the big, the big gym, the big main gym as well. Um, and, uh, we're almost wrapped up with foundations. Um, we got first floor A, just like that corner and some interior column footage, so we're, we're running in on that. We're about two-hundred-and-fifty days of accident-free. This project schedule, it, it's showing, push. So then, I am, with the way these ironworkers are setting steel, a lot of that, we're gonna catch up, a lot, not all, but a lot, very shortly. It's my feeling.
Dr. Walsh, uh, RC is sharing that as the steelworkers...
As the ironworkers are progressing quickly, we will be at a point in February, maybe late February, to do the top it off, whatever you wanna call it. Um, so for the board, uh, we'll be getting to you a couple of days where you can go down, decide the, the last beam, we'll, we'll have it painted white, sign your name, we'll do a ribbon cutting or whatever ceremony you want, but just know sometime in mid to late February will be that, that opportunity to do so.
And, and like I was asking Mark, you know, it's sometime soon, next week or, or, you know, a week to ten days, we'd like to get all together and just kinda get everyone's expectations, what they, what they're thinking about, what's gonna happen that day, and...
Okay.
So logistically, we could get it, um, get it pulled together, especially like, you know, how you wanna photo op, you know? From which angle, uh, so we could pick an appropriate beam that won't hold us up.
Okay.
You know, and we could get the crane in, where we need to get the crane in and stuff like that, so there's a little bit of logistics.
You get to ride the crane, too?
Huh?
Do I get to ride the crane?
Yeah, you could ride the ball.
That completion, wait, that completion date keeps on moving back each time we meet.
Yes, it does.
Are we gonna start the fall of twenty-six? Like, I'm, well, let's say the beginning, the beginning.
Yeah.
August.
They have to hit that day, that's their contract.
That's gonna happen?
Yeah, um...
Where will they make up the most time?
In steel. They'll make up most time setting steel, and then also, once we get enclosed and in a controlled environment, we could start, um, uh, playing around with ideas of double shifting, running two, two crews, you know, working overtime, like, whatever it takes at that point. 'Cause at that, when we're closed in and we have heat in it, whether it's temporary heat and temporary power, you know, we're a master of our own destiny at that point, we're not at the mercy of the P-word, and we're not at the mercy of the weather. So we're kinda in a controlled environment.
Confidence level's high then, right, that we will hit that?
My confidence level's high, yeah, I, I believe we could, it's still early yet, there's a lot we could do to make up some time.
Exclusive of the weather in the soil, there really hasn't been any other big hiccup that, uh, to delay the time, right?
Yeah, yeah. Not yet, not yet, but you just jinxed it.
Okay, go to my fault.
Uh, any other questions you wanna, uh, I got one here, two of them recommending for the board.
Okay.
Um, so this is the, has to do with the electrical, um, revisions that was associated with the changes to the nurses suite. So we previously approved the mechanical changes, uh, these are the electrical changes and, um, embedding now any general, um, trades changes, when they add impact doors and stuff like that, so we're, we're still fighting through those numbers.
Are these mostly due to design changes then, or hardware changes, or, or above, all above?
Yeah.
And this is, I mean, it, it's twenty-two hundred dollars. So on the scale of things, moving the unsuitable soil was, you know, you had said they would go down. Um, is this the only one we're looking at for electrical, or have they only gone through one phase of the process to look at the drawings and make the changes? Thus, there could be more to come.
So this, this one comes from a conversation that we had with the nurses after they looked at the drawings and considered operations and how things would work. They asked about moving a wall or a door, I forget the nature of it, and we didn't think it was gonna be a big deal. Well, this is the, this is the big deal, these, these change orders or what came from them. There's really no other conversations that have happened by anybody about, oh, I wish the door was here, or I wish that had two switches, that, none of that's happened. So I don't foresee there being any other change orders, particularly to the, to changing the design of the space.
So there's nobody else, that, everybody has seen this enough than...
We, we went, we went through a hardware, uh, meeting this past week, and there were some, uh, revisions, uh, on recommendation by, uh, operation of the building on my part, we're horse trading right now with those vendors to, uh, minimize anymore. We have another meeting next week for owner-provided stuff, so we're, we're working on those, but, uh, there, there may be some other small change orders not related to the P-words.
Right, this is ASI, this is in relation to ASI number four, I will say there was, there's been eleven ASI, so we're continuing to get through those, get pricing on those support chains and credits and charges and stuff like that, so...
Okay.
I hope I answered your question.
Who bears the cost for overtime and shifts?
That's part of the negotiations. Um, really, nobody owns, the contractors don't own the overtime, but they also own the end date, and they own some, uh, uh, recovery, uh, scheduled items that may lead to overtime or double shifting, or, you know, jockeying some crews, maybe double crews, working in two areas at the same time and stuff like that.
In other words, if, if a contractor was gonna finish on time, there wouldn't be any need for him to talk overtime? If there was a crew, a contractor that was at risk for finishing on time, rather than if face a penalty, they may opt to go overtime?
Yeah.
And I, we have performance, uh, stipulations in there for the contractors if we're so much extra a day they have to lose.
So RC, my, initially you answered it, I understand it's a change order on our end because people looked over it and had some design changes. Where are we with, has Merit come in and looked at the electrical and started to bid it out so that there will not be an excessive amount of...
Well, they, they bid the drawings, so everything on the drawings on bid day, they, um...
Okay.
What they would vet out continuously as a project owner is any changes, if...
If those are kept to a minimum, then we're...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Uh, Dr. Korsinski, based on what you're seeing, are we keeping those...
We are. Um, I could share with you that we were at a meeting last week and there was actually a word of credit back to us 'cause we found some redundancies in some of our door hardware and the electric and so forth, and that's that horse trading that's going on that...
So the, the credit could be replacing something else then that...
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're working on that dollar value and it, it takes time, but we have, we, we meet every two weeks on change order events just to make sure that, uh, we're keeping everything honest.
Okay.
I think what she's, I think the question she's trying to ask, I'm putting words in your mouth here, Mrs. Walsh Turner, but I think what she's trying to ask is that contractors can't substitute products a, after the, like, from what's been specified, they can't substitute without approval from the Saro Endraw.
Correct.
And then, then somebody, either Dr. Korsinski or Dr. Walsh, or somebody else would be informed that that substitution is happening, so thus, the change order would not.
Yeah, if something changes from what was back on bid day, there's a procedure that they would submit for a substitution, and that would be vetted by the architect, the design team, and then...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Walsh.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Up next, I wanna announce that we had executive sessions on December seventeenth, January seventh, January fourteenth, all for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. At this time, we'll take public comments on agenda items. The public is restricted to two minutes in their, uh, dialogue, and I believe that's at least state their name in the beginning, and there's a total of thirty minutes allotted for this period of the agenda. If any, our two spectators interested in, with that, that being said, we'll move on to curriculum, Mr. Scouso.
Okay, we have two items. Uh, first one's school-sponsored overnight educational activities, and number two, high school course selection guide. I'll leave it open for discussion, anybody have any questions about one or two? I recommend that we place one and two on the consent agenda.
Just one question on the course selection guide, have we gone through again and, you know, reduced, eliminated courses out of here that typically had, uh, low enrollment that we wanna clean out?
I'm sorry, again, Mr. Christensen, yes, you said, yeah, we did, uh, cut a number of courses this year that have historically, uh, been cut just to eliminate some of those selections. Uh, in the summary sheet, you could see some of those, uh, that have historically not performed well. And then we have a monitoring system, and one of the things we've explored, too, is if they start, stop scheduling, we looked at every other year offering until they continue to get eliminated if they're not fielding each year.
Okay.
Okay, so those two will be on the consent agenda, thank you. Uh, Mr. McGregor, if you're available, Personnel Committee?
I am, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, here we go, uh, under Personnel, there are three items. Number one, there's appointment of personnel, number two, change of assignment, and number three, approval of professional tuition reimbursement. Any discussion? Alright, here we go, and I recommend I, we move one, two, and three to the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Modjek, before we move on, could, could we make a correction to the executive sessions since we did not have one tonight?
Oh, that's right, I apologize, thank you, so, that correction is duly noted that there was not an executive session tonight. Thank you.
In case I missed it, unless I missed it, or we're having one later?
You did not.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Janisak, good eye. Um, we discussed it, but Mr. Christensen, uh, facility...
Yeah, there's one, just that one item, that engineering change order for the, uh, electrical components. Any questions on that, any additional questions? I recommend we move that to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Walsh Turner with Finance Committee, please.
Yeah, um, there's the December twenty-four and January twenty-four salaries and bills, November twenty-four financial report, December twenty-four financial report, budgetary transfers, the payment of, um, the new elementary school, one through twelve invoices, um, the payment for Independence Middle School Phase Three to Hayes Design Group and Site Logic, um, the acceptance of the Jefferson Regional Foundation grant, which, congratulations, Dr. Walsh,
Thank you.
on that grant, um, it is to go towards the, um, outdoor classroom and steam, um, projects at the new elementary school. So that's another ten thousand dollars towards forty thousand we already have towards the outdoor project. Um, approval of donations, the Bethel Park High School swimming pool, um, a donation from the, to the South Park wave pool, and then the purchase of surveillance and guest management system. Can I explain that one?
Yeah, so, uh, that is the one component, um, that is owner-provided for the project, uh, which means we are responsible for the, um, acquiring that informa, that equipment, and then the contractors will install it. That price encompasses all of the necessary software, cameras, license plate readers, mounts, um, excuse me, as well as a ten-year licensing warranty.
My only question is, and the ten-year licensing warranty isn't gonna, like, the, just the contents of it and what it can do in ten years way, be out, way out of date by the time we...
So their devices typically follow a five-to-six-year span. Um, in the event that one of the cameras or a component would fail, it would be replaced with the newest model that's on the market. Yep.
We had had that issue before, that's why I asked.
Gotcha.
And, um, payment for Independence Middle School Phase Two...
If I had one question on that, so, you know, since it's over half a million dollars, was that in our original estimates, or is that extra above what our...
That's part of it, yeah, so we, yeah, so we own, um, all the furniture and the, um, all this, surveillance equipment, cameras, so that's what we own for the elementary center, we had it budgeted. The reason why we're putting it on right now is because the pricing is too good to pass up for this year. If we would've got it next year, it would've probably been a couple hundred thousand dollars more, if I'm not mistaken, so that's why we decided to go this route today, 'cause that is just another savings that we can have added to our fund thirty-nine.
So this is, and, this is another soft cost that we are incurring?
That is correct, yep. Well, we, we, we anticipated it, we budgeted for it, so this is nothing above and beyond. This is actually probably through Chris's hard work, a couple hundred thousand dollar savings.
Okay, thank you.
Do we think, you know, any, this may be a little bit like what, uh, Mrs. Turner was asking, but you look at technology, like, ten years is a long time, especially if it's connected technology, you know, do we, do we think it's still gonna be functional after ten years?
Yes, the, um, so the software will, you know, consistently upgrade. Um, the cameras that we are purchasing are the, they just were released to market, so they are the latest model. I, I kinda talked with the company and looked at the roadmap, and, and that was a concern of mine, you know? In a few years, are we gonna be looking at end of life, or, you know, have to worry about, um, you know, discontinuance of, of, of things? This model, like I said, is, is new to market, um, it will be on the market for the next five to six years. And just to, to piggyback off of that, aside from the, the cameras, it encompasses the guest management system as well as the, um, the software capabilities for the school principal or the school resource officer to have a, um, a video wall, if you will, into their office, where they can monitor all of the cameras at once. And just to give you guys a, an idea, this is two-hundred-and-ninety-nine cameras that are, that is going into the facility.
Okay, wow.
And, and components?
And components, correct. And these are cutting-edge, four-k, uh, resolution, top-notch. Um, the guest management system will integrate with us the cameras, so at any given time, if someone checks into the building, um, again, the resource officer, security principal, they can pinpoint the exact location of that person in the building.
And, and the difference is, the, the four-k is so new that the next iteration will be called eight-k, they don't even have, so we couldn't buy up in terms of that situation, so we know technology will maybe outpace itself, but it, there's nothing available beyond the four-k that we're, we can, we can use.
Right.
That was my question, again, with the ten dollars.
And the, the technology, you, you'll be able to read lettering on the shirt, you'll be able to tell if someone has braces. I mean, it's that different than the current stuff that we have.
And we're looking, this is all inside and outside based on the number?
Correct, from the moment you pull off of Kingsboro, you'll be under surveillance.
That's, uh...
Both, both.
That's all, just 'cause he said Kingsboro.
Yes, yeah, my apologies.
All entrances and points to the building.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
And then, um, finally, for the consent agenda, the payment for Independence Middle School Phase Two renovations, um, to Site Logic. And finally, the financials are at everyone's table for thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-nine. And without any objections, I'd move one to ten to the consent agenda.
Alright, thank you.
I did have a quick...
Yes.
...comment, a quick comment, I guess, it's Sharon, on the, um, outdoor classroom. It has been a while since we looked at that, and I was just wondering if we could make note, maybe as we get into the spring or the summer, or whenever it sounds good, to kinda like relook and take a look at the plans and, and show folks, um, what we're hoping to do with that, because it's really exciting and cool, it's just been a long time since we've looked at it.
It actually came up at the PTO, PTA Council meeting this past week, um, it was presented again, and the PTOs are going back to their parents to look at what the PTO as a group from the five elementary schools can also do to help and have a spot in the outside classroom moving forward, kind of as, uh, homage to the five elementary schools.
Oh, that is such a wonderful idea.
That was all Dr. Walsh, I'll, I'll give the report, but that was all Dr. Walsh.
Awesome, I mean, I don't think we need to do it, like, immediately or disrupt any schedules, but, you know, before we open the school at some point, maybe we could just revisit that, because it's very exciting, um, and lots of cool things are planned for it.
And I will tell you also, Mrs. Janisak, that, and, uh, Mrs. Headley can also vouch for this, a lot of the people, when it was first presented to PTO, PTA Council, and then again this time, cited that it would be open during non-school hours also for parts of it, too, so that the public can take advantage of it.
Very nice, thanks.
Just a quick question, the, the grants from Jefferson, that was just not a competitive, obviously, but just, what was the process involved?
Uh, the pro, so it started with a, like, an interview, I met with their grants chair and the director, executive director of Jefferson Foundation, and pitched the proposal, the idea of what we're trying to do, and wanted them to sort of join the effort and create a presence for the Jefferson Foundation and Bethel Park, and, uh, then it followed with a more detailed written proposal and budget estimates and drawings, that sort of thing. Um, I believe their foundation met in December to vote on the rest of their twenty-twenty-four proposals and grant, you know, make grants for the, for the rest of that year, and we're, we got ours in just as the end of their fiscal year.
Is this our first...
No, we've had, we've had two, with Jefferson Regional, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but we've had two other grants awarded for this same project from the both Bethel Park Community Foundation, Education Foundation, and Jefferson Foundation, so we're, we're sixty thousand dollars to the good on that project, which is budgeted to be around ninety thousand dollars.
Good, thank you, sir, glad to hear that. Uh, this time, Policy Committee, Mrs. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Modjek, um, we have lots on the agenda. Um, number one, revision to policies, this is the third and final reading for, for policies. Um, number two, revision to policy, this is the policy on educational opportunity for military children. Um, number three, um, I'd like to, to table, due to a recent court case that was, um, settled concerning Title IX, all of the policies in item number three are pertaining to Title IX, so those will go back to the twenty-twenty versions. Um, and so these, these revisions will be, um, what did they call it, vacated?
Yeah, they're not necessary anymore.
Not necessary.
Yeah.
Um, number four, we have a first of three readings for two policies for naming rights and memorials, so our fields, our, you know, areas of our buildings, these are policies pertaining to naming the... So our fields, our, you know, areas of our buildings, these are policies pertaining to naming those.
And I had asked those to be, should have been pulled.
I have to apologize that yesterday afternoon, we pulled seven-oh-two-point-two off. I think Mrs. Gregg probably came in today and panicked that something happened because she put them back on. And I didn't notice it until just now when I clicked on that item.
Okay.
So seven-oh-two-point-two is, that policy is going back to the policy, or the facilities committee for review before it comes to the board.
Okay.
So, I'd ask that we only, only advance seven-oh-two-point-three, memorials. That one is not, that one is not the same. It speaks to a different process.
Okay.
And that would, yeah, so I apologize, Mrs. Hoppe, that should have been added yesterday. She probably, I never told her I did it. That's probably why. She's going to take away my keys to four dogs.
That is okay.
Dr. Walsh and Mrs. Hoppe,
Yes.
if I can go back to item number three revisions with moving all that and vacating, would we not keep seven-oh-seven? I don't think that, I don't think that one applies to the...
And eight-oh-five, eight-oh-five-point-two would stay.
Okay, school security, that's in two-fifty-four?
Yeah, two-oh, eight-oh, yeah.
Eight-oh-five-point-two.
No, education of military children also was a Title IX issue.
Okay.
Change.
So seven-oh-seven and eight-oh-five-point-two, we can leave on as a first reading?
Anything in one-hundred and two-hundred were Title IX changes.
Okay, so seven-oh-seven, eight-oh-five-point-two, we'll stay on there for first reading?
Then the second reading of two-fifty-four.
You've got two-fifty-four on the first reading?
No, it's second and third.
No, item number two is the second reading.
Item number two is the second reading.
Okay, but two-fifty-four. And you have two-fifty-four on the first reading?
And item number three as well. So that needs to be, maybe we just need to revise this whole list.
Could you just table the whole thing except for the third reading?
Yeah, so two-fifty-four, actually, it's correctly placed in the second reading. We've seen this previously. It was mandated by the state in a recent, not recent, but last summer when the, when the school code was updated. They updated that requirement that schools enroll military children even before they've moved into the district so that their families can have a little more continuity or stability with amount of traveling and relocating they normally do in their lives. So, that one doesn't belong in a first reading.
Okay, and it also includes the National Guard, members of the National Guard or Reserve.
That's the addition.
Yes.
That's an addition as well. So it really doesn't have anything to do with Title IX.
So two-fifty-four will stay?
Yes.
As it is?
Yeah.
It does, yes. And we can easily extract those other policies. There's no reason why everything needs to be consolidated together. We can just amend it to, to reflect, this is only going to be three policies.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to number five. And these are the ARs associated with some of those policies. That's one AR, it's for discussion only. Number six is for discussion only on hazing, it's the administrative regulation. And number eight is discussion only, rules for use of school facilities. That is also an administrative regulation. Does anyone have any questions or...
I would ask that the administrative rule for two-thirty-four not move forward at this time because that does have to deal with the Title IX that we're removing from the first reading.
Yeah, it doesn't, the, the recent changes or reversion back to 2020 rules of Title IX doesn't really affect this. It just includes the Title IX coordinator as a part of accommodating or supporting a student who qualifies as, for this condition.
And a reminder that ARs do not require approval of the board, correct?
Yeah, correct.
They need to reflect.
It has to correspond to the board policy. It just directs the administration on how to administer policy.
So there's no moving forward or voting or anything on that? That's our information and discussion only?
Yeah, right.
So, I, I did notice that on the AR two-thirty-four, there, it's left blank. There's a timeframe in that very first section. And there are options within one school day, within three school days, or other. But all options are in the AR. So I didn't know if...
Yeah, that might be my fault because typically before Mrs. Gregg puts them on for acknowledgement by the board, we check off which, which of those options it should be. And it requires me going and comparing it to the policy, so we follow what the current policy is.
Okay.
I think what we'll do here is just make those corrections and bring it back to the board again for acknowledgement before we consider it final.
I saw a similar sort of thing in seven-oh-seven AR. There is a section about, wait, where did it go?
We fixed it. We fixed it. You looked at it before we fixed it.
Oh, all right. I did look at it. Must have looked at it before you fixed it.
Yeah.
It appeared to give people an option to set up a smoking area. And I was like, I don't think you meant that.
No, we were making corrections on that at the last minute and...
All right, then those were all the comments that I had. Thank you so much.
So the AR for hazing, which is, let's go back up. Two-forty-seven does need corrections because it does reference the August first, 2024, Title IX changes at the bottom of the...
Yes.
So that would all need to be corrected.
Yeah, just that disclaimer would be removed.
Yes. And whatever disclaimer was in there for 2020, if there was one, there wasn't?
No, we added that disclaimer because as the policies were updated by PSBA, Pennsylvania was part of that injunction to prevent those new rules from being implemented.
Correct.
In Pennsylvania. So, we said, well, this policy still applies, but we're going to follow the 2020 guidelines during the duration of that injunction or whatever the legal term is there, Lee, you can bail me out here. But now that we have settlement, at least a conclusion from that court case, we can take all those disclaimers out because they don't, the original 2020 version of the policy, it now applies again.
Okay.
I was intrigued by the change from, I was intrigued by the change from verbally to orally. Is there a substantive indifference?
Yeah, I don't know.
There was a lot of that.
Yeah, I don't know.
They changed verbally.
Used to be verbally, now it's orally?
Yeah.
It depends on who's writing it.
I thought they were synonymous.
Or the police, I mean, they changed things like even down in this AR, if the police, the police is crossed out and law enforcement.
First thing, yeah.
Is now the correct term.
So just to confirm, one to two, move to consent. Number three, seven-oh-seven, eight-oh-five-point-two will stay. Number four, remove seven-oh-two-point-two. And then number five, we're putting it back on after corrections. Number six, remove disclaimer.
I believe we've got it.
Okay.
If not, we'll, I'll let you know.
Mrs. Headley?
So I just had a question. I did notice you fixed, added some stuff. But on the seven-oh-seven AR, where it talks about, let me find it, about food and drinks, and with the prepackaged snacks and candy, would they be able to have drinks too at, like, concession stands for theater events or anything? Or just, just like chips, gummies?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Definitely nothing in the auditorium. This was trying to accommodate the fact that the wrestling, basketball, and swimming boosters do sell packaged snacks, chips, and candies and things at their concession as a fundraiser so they can continue that practice. But selling walking tacos or Gatorades and things is not permitted.
So no, no liquids, just so, because the boosters will probably ask, so...
Yeah, we definitely want to get away, because that, it goes from just picking up litter to having them off and...
So is that just in the auditorium or is that also in the gym?
No, this is just the gymnasium.
Okay.
It doesn't really say that specifically, but we're talking about the packaged snacks and candy for concessions at the gymnasium.
While we're on that one, the next item fifteen, there isn't a time filled in for evacuation of building. So, you know, to put it in. Oh, there isn't.
There is not because we have to, I think it varies. We can, we can flex it.
Oh, okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
It's conditional to the activity. There could be overtime. We don't want to put a hard, fast rule and then, I mean, there is a school district in, where they shut the lights off at ten PM because of municipality rule. We don't want to be that, we don't want to be that situation. This is, this is over in the Forest Hills area.
Right.
Okay, so you have all those corrections, Mr. Christensen?
Good.
You're good.
Okay, no other questions. We'll move forward. We have other. Mrs. Headley, you just have two items for other. Would you mind, please?
Sure. We have other, we have number one, student agreements. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the resolution and agreements for two students. Do I have to read the, is that okay? Okay. And then number two, the Board of School Directors approves the 2024-2025 Health and Safety Plan of the Bethel Park School District.
I believe this will be the last time because it was requirement that's associated to ARP and ESTER's funding, and both of those have pretty much expired as of the end of that last calendar year. So, this will be the last time the board has to approve a updated plan.
And as we're seeing, there is no changes to the previous plan, correct?
There's nothing verbally changing in the plan. The, the discussion in there, the points are, you know, to follow what the CDC requirements are. Those change, but they're not significant. And so that's why we keep it a vague term because if not, then we'd be updating the plan every month if something changes. So, I mean, there's, there's discussion out there that this was to be gone months ago, but they're just slowly...
But will we, will we be safe if we don't have this plan?
We'll continue to...
Notice that you used the word orally rather than verbally.
Are you verbally asking?
Orally.
Are you requesting that, by the way?
Okay, nothing else. This time for public comments, our two guests, any desire to come forward? And we're going to just pass right by that. Board comments, please, if anybody?
Yes, the Fantastic Four, which is the Community Foundation, the Education Foundation, the Historical Society, and the, missing one. Library, Bethel Park Library are holding their Bourbon, Beans, and Vino, February first, four to eighth at Community Center. Please buy your tickets.
You did say vino this time.
Vino.
It's vino.
Vino.
I thought she said vino. Did anybody else hear?
I orally. I audibly.
And I said it slowly, so I said vino.
Challenge. You got a challenge? Jim, we got a challenge on this?
It was vino, D-E-A-N-O.
So, so I encourage anyone, as the Community Foundation and the Education Foundation have given grants for this outdoor classroom, please support them.
I have one thing.
Please.
Steel Center just was awarded a competitive equipment grant from the state for ten welders in the, in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. So it'll have some welding equipment for our students who are in the welding program at Steel Center.
We welders, Jim?
We love it. Well, sign up.
Any of our kids out there welding?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
So, very proud of the work that the Executive Director, Kevin Rice, is doing over there. He's doing a phenomenal job acquiring all the money he can for our kids to get them educated in the trades and the technical education. So, kudos to Steel Center.
Excellent. On this end over here, Vince, Casino? Darren, Buffy, Sharon, anything?
No, thanks.
I just, when I was reading through one of the local papers, one of our Bethel Park staff members, Larry Mertz, had passed away. Some of us know Larry. Larry's been involved with our athletic department for years. He's a retired Pittsburgh Public Schools teacher, art teacher, I believe. But Larry's more known for all his events helping us out here. And last year, he was on the Chang Gang down there at the football game. So our sympathy and condolences shared with the Mertz family because if you got to know Larry, he was a real good guy. And he was a good proud member of the Bethel Park School community. So, again, our condolences to the Mertz family, so. Anything else being said? Talk, we're ready? All right, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you. We got time.
Thank you.
Ooh, my.